Evening, everyone. Welcome to the board meeting. All rise. Can we leave this in the flag? Flag, should we just?
Should we fly?
In the city of America. And should the Republicans send us? I mean, it's been hungry. Is this? Thank you, everyone. Um. Hello. We have one point. I started asking from. On the board meeting agenda. Second. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. That motion through the board meeting minutes. One, two. Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, uh. Good, right? Okay. To, uh. Gianna.
Everybody, excuse the costume. So it's starting.
We're looking forward to it.
Oh, me too. So we had another successful Stop and Read Day on October eleventh. Um. And JHS is running our annual food drive for the Geneseo Brooklyn Food Pantry. Personal items and non-perishable food is appreciated. It started on November first and it runs through December sixteenth. They will also be making holiday and greeting parents and senior citizens of our community in Morgan Estates. Uh, and JHS recently assisted at the historical spirit walk at Temple Hill Acre Cemetery. The focus this year was influential women of Geneseo. And they helped with elementary school's country. There's so much fun was the part of that. And the Grand City Cross Country teams competed as sectionals on Saturday. At Ledger's State Park, both teams placed sixth overall. And Catherine Staley finished sixth overall in the girls' race, which qualifies her to race as a state championship. Meet this Saturday at Vernon Verona Sherrell High School in Verona, New York.
Yes.
Two gooders in the process of praying and other fundraising to help support Ukraine. Our information is to come soon. On the twenty-seventh of last month, six junior and senior girls heard from professionals in the manufacturing industry regarding the need for women in the field and how rewarding manufacturing can be during the Women in Manufacturing Summit. Lunch and Learn tomorrow will be with Kevin G. Van Allen, discussing the careers of an attorney and judge. Little Mermaid tickets go on sale tomorrow. Those dates are eighteenth and nineteenth at, I believe, seven thirty P. M. And the twentieth at, I believe, two. The Sunday one is a matinee.
Gianna, it's two thirty.
Two thirty. Two thirty.
My bad. Thank you.
Um, Senior High All County Band and Vocal is this Wednesday, as well as PSA, ACTs. Excuse me, that morning. Um, Senior High All State Chorus is next Friday and Saturday, the eighteenth and nineteenth. And since we don't have a middle school representative, I'll just go ahead and do that. Um, their middle school, the video digital media, sixth and eighth grade art has been all have all been using the new Apple computer products. The iPads and iMacs have been a big hit for the students. And the work being created this year is incredible. The Junior All State Chorus performed this past Saturday on the day. Any questions?
It's a great report. When is it?
Uh, two thirty.
Thirty. It's on sale tomorrow.
Tomorrow. They go they go public, I believe, on.
So tomorrow, they'll be on sale. You'll get the email blast and they'll go home with elementary kids, um, in their mailboxes. But we'll do an email blast tomorrow. And it's all done online, so there was QR codes that you just scanned. And if anyone has any issues, you can let me know. I'm helping with ticketing. I've already helped someone up there with some ticketing. I'm happy to do that as well.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
It's on QR code, so it's really easy.
You're a dinosaur.
Thank you so much for sharing it for all your help.
Great report.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Very much. Good luck. Break a leg.
Thank you.
Uh, so no, uh.
Nope.
Okay.
So the elementary students have worked hard to prepare them of presentations, so.
Oops.
Of course, I did test this like maybe twenty minutes before.
Well, you're under pressure now.
I'm Cooper. I'm Finley.
And we are in fifth grade.
We wanted to share a few fun things that have been happening at Geneseo Elementary.
October has been an extremely busy month for students in the elementary building. Our Go Blue trait we focused on was leadership and the students brought in over two hundred fifty Go Blue cards and got to sign the wall of fame. We had a Go Blue assembly out on the turf and played head, shoulders, knees, toes, go as a way to highlight leadership.
Ms. Berks had students decorating boxes for troops that will that will be shipped out filled with goodies donated by Aunt Cookie Sub Shop. How many boxes do you think they made? There were a total of forty-five boxes donated.
The fourth graders hosted families for a spooky book talk where they all read spooky books and presented on them. The kids did a great job talking about the themes of their books and gave some great recommendations.
The third graders and their families on families in for an ofrenda celebration. They spent time over the month with a resident artist. They created their own personal ofrendas for the day of the dead. They made powerful narratives and even painted in in art scene. A scene to represent their tradition.
We had a guest scientist come in and share some cool experiments involving liquid nitrogen. His name was Dr. Vogel. He showed some other cool things, including how things levitate.
On Halloween, the garden entrance was filled with pumpkins. All students were able to go into the patch and pick a pumpkin to take home. And on Halloween, we had costume a costume parade. Some of the best costumes were Jack Skellington, a chicken, and a cow with calendars. Mr. Van Epps was a toy soldier, and it was great.
The fifth graders are busy with fundraising for the Wheel Watch trip. We just finished selling baked goods and could win prizes for selling. We did much better than expected and almost doubled what was expected. More fundraising will happen soon.
This month, we will be focusing on the Go Blue trait optimism and our sharing daily affirmations on the announcements. We are so lucky to have the the nice weather and hope it continues in November. We hope to have our veterans from the community come and participate in the assembly on Thursday.
Thank you for listening and have a great day the Go Blue Way.
Just want to thank Mr. Van Epps and the elementary students because it's one of our first elementary student reports and it was great. We look forward to many more, so thank you.
Well, done, Mr. Van Epps. Very nice.
Let's all talk about.
So that's a GCE grant funded activity. Um, it started three years ago when the students could go to the pumpkin patch and pick out the pumpkins. So J and A purchased the pumpkin in the bottom here. And it was such a success that we just kept doing it.
Okay. We want the presentation, so. Are you ready, Mr. Veely? Welcome.
All right, so I got a couple on here. Um. The first one was just the hockey trip, the, uh. Geneseo Livonia, I can see months in an overnight trip, uh, in December. They consider your board pass that one, which I updated, wasn't sharing today. So that she can all go over there. And so you had that Chris had a session by hockey meetings tonight, so he couldn't be here to present, so. That would do it for it. Um, but pretty much it's pretty self-explanatory. The Laker backers who's the club is pretty much doing the fundraising for it. Um, they'll pay for the cost of it and everything else in that. Um, they're gonna leave, uh, six A. M. On the twenty-ninth of December. Get up toward Albany. Um, I don't know where they're going to stop for some food and things along the way. Play a hockey game at Albany Academy. Go back and hang out a little bit at the hotel or things like that, catch a dinner. Put it back by eleven. I get packed up the next morning, go play another game at Albany Academy, and then we'll return home. Just kind of a trip up. Albany Academy is kind of a private studio up in Albany area. Uh, they actually have their own hockey ring down at the campus. It's a pretty nice facility, so. Get a chance, okay, we'll get online. It's a. So, uh, so really, that's really the trip. The budget's kind of there. It's about five thousand dollars. Um, they have the money in their account to help out with that. A couple of things we just have to work out is just the. That, uh, we'll kind of do Geneseo about.
Now, they're going via coach bus?
No, they'll go through a school bus. One of our school bus drivers will drive them on. It saves five to ten dollars.
So there's also suburban going?
Yes. Usually, usually you take a suburban up just to take all the equipment, so it's not all the buses and everything else. So the assistant coach will be going well. So either Chris, usually Chris drives the bus because he's one of the school employees and identifies the bus. They take care of each other.
Great. Sounds good. Would, um.
They may hook up with, uh, potatoes probably going to, it's actually, uh, Geneseo United. So the potato, the potato, they throw their schools out there. They're probably going up there as well. So they might connect, say, the same hotels as those kids.
You know where they're staying up there?
Uh, we haven't booked the hotel.
Okay. Uh, questions from the board on the trip? I'm making more. For a second, sorry. Um, discussion. It's not done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Great. Thank you, Mr. Veely.
If you want, Mr. Veely, we'll just switch the order of the presentation. You can go next. If that doesn't mess you up, John, does it?
Nope.
Okay.
Sit down. They'll put it on your other hand. All right.
Bring it.
All right, so, um. We did a survey probably five-ish years ago just to see, um, if we're kind of offering what's, uh, offering our students, what they want to participate in within our school, inner class, I got vibes. But by then, I think it was probably five years ago. Came back, uh, pretty much we were kind of offering what we needed to, so we didn't look at trying to adding anything. We've had a couple, uh, people reach out, uh. Family members, community members, uh, just requesting us to take a look at it. Uh, there's a few sports out there, uh, and I'll say now lacrosse, some parents have been, I was about lacrosse. Um, I have an interest in playing football. I also have an interest in tennis. So those are some things that people are reaching out to me on and ask me. Could we do this? Could we explore those things? Could we look at it? So, uh, we did a survey with students. I also did one with parents. The parents one's much better. Um, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the student one because we did the parent one at the end of August. We had over two hundred responses for parents, which was a pretty good, uh, response rate. Um, but I think it's probably a little bit more accurate. Uh, the students, we had about sixty or seventy of that kind of respondents and not a great turnout. Um, with that, as far as that goes, but, uh, with that being said, I'll just show it a little bit what the response was, um, with there, so. General questions is gender. Uh, we threw that a little bit. Uh, current grade level, we did four through eleven. Uh, just didn't, we didn't really offer to ask for graders when they were leaving at this point. Uh, just kind of letting them know where they are. And sports being offered, uh, just if we're offering what they want. As it was sixty-three responses, seventy-five percent think that we are offering, um, enough sports. And then fifteen percent kind of. Like, sure, we might do the office more and then somebody. Class, I got vibes, but it's happy as well. Um, with those offerings, here's the top ones that kind of came out. Um, it's sports that we are not offering, uh, when asked. So as you see, lacrosse, tennis, um, indoor track, bowling, rugby. Are a couple there that, uh, people are interested in. Um, we do offer like indoor track. We do have some students that sometimes have participated for us indoor track as partial teams. Um, which we can do pretty easily for, um, individual sports because it's really just we try to repose close school around us. We asked if they'd be willing to take on one of our athletes. They would represent Geneseo, but they would go and train and go to meets with the other school. Um, kind of a cost effective way to do that. Are we able to do that with individual sports because it doesn't, uh, change that numbers? If you don't want them to do all this merger to other schools, routine sports, you have to merge with another school. They can bet's numbers. It could affect classification, definitely like that, um, in the team. Um, just kind of general stuff during the fall season, we listed kind of what they were. Uh, and do, you know, do you, in which sport do you participate in? Kind of got a breakdown of that. Uh, during the winter season, the same thing. Um, spring season, the same thing. Um, and then, you know, out of these, are you participating in sports which you are interested that Geneseo offers? I know it's only sixty-two responses, but ninety-two percent of them, um, that were did the survey, I did say that we offered. What kind of what we have. So it also had a huge turnout there, but it's ninety-two is pretty high. So then we also did ask, do you currently play a sport or sports outside of the school sports program? Of travel, those kind of things. Um, again, some of these came up. And remember, we offer some of these, because, uh, students may play club soccer, they do that. So we do offer those sports, but they also need to play outside, outside of this school setting. And so that was kind of the survey, but this is why I just kind of think kind of is a little bit more detailed. Um, just basically, uh, based on the parents. So two hundred and four responses, like I said, kind of see the breakdown as far as, um, how many people responded for the grade level. Uh, is a school district often in sports or child or children want to play? Seventy-eight percent, um, feel like we are. And about nineteen to twenty percent think that we're gonna um, offer everything that they want to. And so that's kind of where that break down, so, you know, eighty percent is, I think, a pretty good percentage. Um, if you kind of look at that, so. Uh, if you answer no to question two, uh, here's the list of sports that you, uh, you play that we don't currently offer. And lacrosse, there's twelve students or parents that responded. Lacrosse would be something of interest. Seven for tennis. Uh, girl's swimming is on there for four, uh, boys volleyball, archery, and then some other, uh, just unique, uh, ones there. Again, just to help you guys understand, if you don't understand a few things on that, but like girl's swimming is a fall sport. Um, it's section five, so girl's swimming is offered in the fall. We don't offer it. Um, we do allow girls to swim on our, our boys team, uh, which allows smaller schools. Feel a full girl's team in the fall. Probably a lot of our, a lot of our swimmers, uh, female swimmers that swim on the boys team also play a fall sport, whether it be volleyball or cross country. Uh, again, during the fall season, which sport do you participate in? So they kind of went through and, uh, broke that down. Uh, same with the winter season. Same with the spring. And then again, are you, are they able to participate in the sports that they're interested in that Geneseo offers? Ninety percent of the parents responded yes, uh, just shy of ten percent said no. So again, I think it speaks, uh, that we are offering quite a few sports that our students want to participate in. Uh, that we feel like we do a good job. There's always that ten percent that I think that we, uh, first of all, they're opportunities. Uh, again, there's one question there, just if, uh. Do you answer no to a question, why they're not participating and kind of just, uh, ask, just try to break it down a little bit more for for my, you know, information to, uh, whether it's they tried out, didn't make a team. Maybe they have different conflicts, uh, maybe the parents just don't want them to participate. Uh, kind of approach, different thing like that. Um, just so that's large of information for me to kind of look at and digest a little bit to, uh, look at their athletic performance. So, yeah, do they currently participate in a sport outside? Seventy percent of our student athletes do. Um, and again, there's a breakdown, sixty-seven students participating in some kind of soccer outside. And it's kind of listed through there. I've seen soccer, baseball, basketball, softball, hockey, they all have, um, again, lacrosse is on there. Dance is on there as well, so there's some community things on there. So that was really the breakdown, um, as far as those things go. Uh, like I said, we've had a couple of requests to add, to look at adding a few sports. Um, so that's really why I wanted to share that, so that we can have that conversation at some point. Um, we'll probably hear some conversations tonight about a few of those things, I, I believe. Uh, so, uh, you know, I just wanted to share that with you. Um, I do want to say, you know, sports are all going to vary by as far as, uh, what they're gonna cost. Whether it's going to be cost effective or not to have to add a sport. Uh, the other big thing is just participation. Is it going to impact our other programs that we currently have? Uh, I think that's what we have to look at as well. If we're going to add a, a fall sport, are we going to, uh, not be able to field a soccer team? Or not be able to field a football team or a volleyball team or what might be there? So I think that's what we really have to look at, considering adding a sport as well. The impact that it would have on our, our current programs. We have had times over the last three or four years where we, you know, haven't been able to field teams at a certain level. Uh, last year, we didn't field modified softball. Few years before that, we didn't have a JV baseball team. We were able to field a couple of modified baseball teams, but we just didn't have, um, those numbers to field a JV baseball. So those are things that, those are a couple of things that we have to look at, uh, when we're trying to analyzing whether we should add a sport or not. Uh, the other thing is just the opportunity that exists out there with particular sports. I, like I shared with you, as far as individual sports, it's a little easier, uh, because we can kind of do partial teams and they can go out there and train and participate with another school. Uh, when you're looking at team sports, I think it would be very hard for us sometimes to add another team sport just by ourselves, uh, because I think that would really take away from our numbers a lot of, a lot of our current programs. Um, what we can look at is, is kind of merging or collaborating with other local school districts. Um, kind of there's school districts out there that would be willing to take us in and provide another opportunity for our student athletes to participate. So those are a couple of things that we kind of will take a look at, um, and, and we analyze, but we should add something. Okay, questions or?
So certainly you have a process for this, right?
Yeah.
Somebody request lacrosse for us to do.
Yeah, so, 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 normally someone would, would request, uh, you know, could you take a look at, uh, adding, I know I use lacrosse right now. Uh, if you go here or without, but, you know, someone, uh, I've had probably five or ten people reach out to me about adding lacrosse. Um, the one reason why that's kind of been brought up a little bit is that, uh, there are some local, uh, schools that have lacrosse, have on in Livonia. Um, a lot of kids participating in their, their club teams all the way up through sixth grade. And then when they hit to sixth grade, there's nothing for them to do with lacrosse. So they'd like to see their, their, their children to compete in lacrosse, um, and the benefits of that. So that request would come in. If you look at it, how might it impact our other programs? The cost, uh, how that would shake out, you know, you're looking at the process, probably about could be around fifteen thousand dollars, uh, total costs. Um, for them, that would be split amongst three of the school districts. So you might look at five to six thousand per school district, and he split it, uh, equally amongst the three school districts. Um, sometimes schools, if you merge, will add globally, you have a student athlete. So it might be a thousand dollars for every kid that plays lacrosse or five hundred that for every student that plays lacrosse. So it's kind of done differently, um, regardless of how the two schools play that. So we get that request, we'll take a look at all that. Um, that conversations and then, uh, I'll see, bring our recommendation forward to the board.
Great, just out of curiosity, lacrosse, whether it's us or joint people or the district, how many kids do you need to field the lacrosse team, more or less?
Um, well.
Is there a number, uh, number you'd be looking for?
I would, I mean, it's high school sports, so you're always, I can maximize the participation.
Yeah.
Um, but you would need, I think, fifteen to twenty total to really make sure that you have a good, successful program. You know, student athletes get hurt, they get injured, um, they don't show up because they're sick. Eligibility, different things like that, so, you know, he can go, I don't think it feels like a lot of lacrosse players to have them go in sustain.
Do you look at if they just play lacrosse or if they play something else, so if we do adapt lacrosse?
So we would look at our, our, the people that would reach out to me. Um, we would currently look at what they participated in the spring and would that impact their programs? Um, I guess when I say that, you have to be careful when you look at that because I can say that the people that are interested in it, it would not impact our programs. But once you add, could that take away, um, student athletes from programs? So like football is, is a new thing out there for, for girls in the spring. Um, it just started in New York State's kind of its emerging program. Um, they're working on having a, actually a state, um, title in and everything like that. It was, it was about eight schools, I think, in section five that did, did it last year as a pilot program. Um, and it was pretty popular. And so there's, uh, I have a, a meeting coming up soon just to go and listen to the, the facts behind it. Um, and one thing about flag football is there is grants for it, it's funded by the Buffalo Bills that fund it. But doesn't have a, uh, impact on the district right away, but I don't think they're gonna fund that forever. As more schools take it on and get involved in that. But I know the student athletes that have approached me, I'll do this day in a lot of strict sport. Um, so that would definitely impact a lot of our programs in spring.
Thank you. Any other questions? Board? Thank you. What are your ideas? Um, Mr. Van Epps?
I guess it's probably a lot nicer than lying in clean. He's kind of.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming tonight. Last time when I was up here, we threw a lot of data and numbers out at you. Uh, and I thought that was an important starting point for our team. Um, and today I'm going to get to the end side of things. Uh, you saw some kiddos up there. Uh, they're kind of the why of what we do. The data is, is the what, and then this is going to be the how. Uh, the next steps of that data conversation, so. And also shout out to those kids, they, they created that script, interview people. So they're excited to keep going with that. Um, so tonight I just want to unpack, uh, how at Geneseo Elementary, we aim to move forward together. And then our, uh, tagline this year presented it to staff and came up with our own definition as to what that would look like for us as a building. Our work together this year has focused on and will continue to focus on who are we as people? Who are we as educators, who are our students that we're working with? And then how do we do that? How do we move forward together? By the end of this year, we aim to have a mission statement developed for the elementary building that we can all anchor into. So that when we have to approach some tough educational decisions, we can say this is why we're doing what we're doing. It may not be easy. It may not always look pretty, but if we connect back to that mission statement, uh, something as simple as moving forward together, we can recognize that we're doing it for a common purpose. So we kind of compartmentalize it, uh, into three different category, three different categories. We have our curriculum and segment goals. We have our high leverage instructional practices and then our whole child. The data that we showcased at our, at our last meeting really focused on, um, our math and ELS for New York State at the elementary level. But these, uh, focus areas for the building at the elementary level are not just looking at the five data. It was looking all the way up through, uh, middle school and high school because those kids started at the elementary level at one point. So it would be very naive of us to not look at that data and say, what are trends that we're finding there? Um, and then how can we make an impact in these students now to help them be successful as they uh, approach middle school and high school and beyond? So some, some focus areas for us as a building this year, based on that data, is looking at revisions to our curriculum. Uh, this is actually an area that we're looking and unpacking as we approach our strategic planning. But what is our curriculum? How do we, uh, truly unpack our curriculum to a level that we understand our standards? And then what are the resources that we're using to support that? Our, our teachers are doing an incredible job of taking resources that they're provided with uh, and, and turning to our students and saying, this is what you need to learn. What we want to do is unpack some of that together and say, all right, this is what we're told we need to teach kids. What is the best way to teach it to them? Uh, so we'll do that at some of our curriculum revisions. Also, let me add assessment, and I can use our assessment to help provide us with, uh, some information more routinely so that we can, uh, work through data review cycle and make some more instructional decisions that are meeting our students where they're at, also identifying gaps in instruction and then slowly. Also identifying gaps in instruction and then slowly building in programs that are uh built for individual students to help them be successful. That's our curriculum and assessment focus this year. All the work that we're going to be doing this year will be focusing in this area when we're talking curriculum, design and instruction. Um and we're already beginning some of those phases with with some staff members. Our next piece is high leverage instructional practices. Uh our, once again, the the work that our teachers are putting in to make sure that our students are staying engaged. Uh I think I step back and just am in awe of their dedication and their commitment to continuing to find what is going to be best for our kiddos. So the purpose of this focus is just to look at our instructional delivery and design and say, is this best for all of our students? Part of that is recognizing where our students are, where they're coming from, and then with that in mind, how do I make the best decisions for this cohort of kids? Might look different from last year, like might look different from last week. But being flexible enough to make those decisions and then having all the tools and protocols, which is the second bullet. To make sure that our students are engaged for the entirety of those lessons. Uh and there's some research there just recognizing how long we should be directly instructing a student versus. Looking at different modalities to ensure that they're engaged with the lesson and unpacking some of those as a staff, I think will take us through that step. The last piece is differentiation, not just enriching, but also interrupting uh as necessary. And how we can harness that in some of the engagement protocols and design and delivery of our lessons to keep kids engaged. Our last piece that we're focusing on is our whole child, whole child learning. Uh this is a big focus that we are beginning to unpack at that strategic planning um level. But at the elementary level, we're seeing this. As um as a springboard, but as we look up through middle school and high school, it's something that is is pertinent up there as well. So how do we take advantage of our youngest learners and look at benchmarks in social emotional learning, which have come out of New York State? How do we unpack them and build criteria at each level so that we know that a kindergartner shouldn't walk away recognizing feelings? First graders shouldn't be able to ID those feelings in different situations, and then we can pull back and develop some tiered interventions of supports. So if if a couple of kiddos haven't mastered those at a certain point, what can we do as a building and as a system to provide them some extra support in that area? Rather than just saying, well, let's push them forward to to the next level or the next unit in social emotional learning. So based on all that data that we presented last time, we have these three huge areas of focus, which we detailed in front of you, but that's important for us to. Uh transition into the next phase of our mission development. We are unpacking some really heavy stuff right now as a as a team, and it's made us feel a little bit uncomfortable. As we talk about who are our students, uh our our population continues to evolve. Uh and when we recognize that and we truly enter each day with that perspective of who our new student is. Then all of these other pieces will make sense, we all kind of.
So thank you, thank you very much. This is Flawless, you're up.
Always make sure to put something in between me and the students, they always have the best presentations. No offense to Casey and Craig, but the students really knock it out of the park when we give our presentation. Um I'll go through a couple of slides, we just talked about the general things, why not? And then when I get to the um for first season, the capital project updates, I'll let Gary speak a little bit of. Of where we are on the basis scheduling and budget. So um you may or may not have heard, but the accountability is starting again. The US Department of Education has approved the New York State Plan to Restart Accountability Amendments. If you remember, these are S requirements, they look at attendance rate, graduation rates, participation rates for our three to eight. Um assessments as well as how we're performing on those assessments. So they are looking to try and modify those um those measures because they understand that. You know, it hasn't been typical last three years, so really trying to help how they're gonna identify schools who are in need of improvement. And then they're also looking at different criteria for schools who are currently identified. So um as we learn more about that, we'll be ready to share that information as well. Um we recently had a request to um complete the Holocaust Instruction Survey, ours is completed and submitted. Um you know, this was a new regulation that was scrapped forth that we had to identify how we were teaching the Holocaust. Um across eight through twelve, um and Stephanie and the principals are really interviewing, completing that survey. Our new specialist. So I had provided an update earlier this year that New York State was moving towards computer-based testing. And they have, they have kind of a a tiered implementation of a full, by twenty twenty six, we'll have a full implementation. Where ELA, math, science, grades three, three will all be completed by computer-based testing. Um if you remember last time, I really, um this is not a large lift for us, John has really been instrumental in. Moving Geneseo towards computer-based testing, and we've been doing it now for a while.
Five, I think?
Yeah, it's been a while. Um but the one piece that I did wanna share is, one of the steps they were gonna roll out was the nicest lap. New York State English and Sign Language Achievement Test was scheduled to be administered this spring as a computer-based test. And we were just notified last week that that's with the. So we'll continue to monitor and see how their um schedule of their computer-based testing actually will roll out from New York State. Another piece that I wanted to share is schools are required to file the Kidney Vento Homeless Act. And what this is, is an act to help teach students who um at some point may have their living situation disrupted. It's not, it's not regular, it's not fixed, it's not adequate. And although it's a little bit hard to see on that chart, you can see the first year is two thousand nineteen. And we had ten students that qualified under this provision. Similar in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one and twenty two, um those numbers actually went down. And if you remember, that was during COVID and um. People were not permitted to be infected at that time, so we really saw a decrease in in our numbers. And fortunately now that has changed, um prior to um. October eighth, which was our Fed's Day, we had seventeen students who were qualifying. And then after um October eighth, we are up to twenty eight additional students. And there's, there's been a local reason um as to why there's been a significant increase um for after October ninth. And we won't be into that in public session, but that has a significant impact for our students, for our teachers. Um you know, it it means that there, where they are living is not fixed, it's not right, it's not every day are they going home. Um to a place where they can have some of those those nurturing and and loving situations and secure. Um so it significantly impacts their ability to perform. And then there's also logistical um constraints that it puts on a district, because we are required to try transportation. Um and some of these students um can be as far away as Greece, Henrietta. Um and thankfully, Mister Ballard, at this point, has been able to meet all of our transportation requests. But it is just, it's it's knowledge to know that, you know, this is something that we are doing our best to meet our students' needs. But it does have an impact on the district. All right, capital improvement project, so the one thing that Mister Dwyer had said that he wanted to see was twelve-inch block with mortar. And there it is.
There it is.
Um and and what that is, that is the um wall that will be the wall, back wall of our new gym. That's how we'll enter the condition, which will be from, and it's got a very hallway. And that large hole in the lower left, that's the door to enter into the our new gym space. So what you can see is it's, you know, solid construction, we're excited about that. Um the progress of what's happening week to week. It visually, it appears slow, but a lot is happening. Um you can see in the lower right corner, that's a new wall that is um being constructed, and then we have a lot of quarters that have been poured. And are ready for that next phase, so Gary, I'll I'll turn it over to you.
So progress is doing very well, we're we're not at all um nervous about it, they are doing a good job as far as. Our concerns is mostly Steve General right now, and we're doing the masonry work. As Cindy's pictures illustrate, is that they have brought their footings all the way around, we've got one corner, the west corner. Of um of the masonry malls out for now, so we can add access, the equipment can get in and out, workers can get in and out of the addition. So that wall is actually coming around at this point, since that picture was taken. So progress is doing well, weather's certainly been in our favor, and uh. Hope it stays this way for a while, right? And um. The, as you know, the high school gym was turned over, district is using that. Um we got the go-ahead day on the mezzanine, we're going to go ahead now with that work to to fix that. So that space can be used for elementary school gym, I believe is what the intended purpose of that. And as far as budget, we are in good shape so far, we are doing well, we're on track for what we expect to be on budgets. We don't have any issues there, and the auditorium, as we all know, was bid uh a few months ago. That work is in the seminal phase and ordering materials, so that doesn't happen until next year. But we're positioned so that we can get the materials on order because some of the things such as standard lighting are forty plus weeks from now. So um that has been a priority to to get that momentum ready so we can have it. On that right now, so. Yeah, we are, we are, we're doing really well, I think. It's trending very well, and the weather is certainly poor down there.
Box any questions?
We're gonna get what we can get.
Um personnel updates, we continue to seek. People fulfill our ELA, middle school, high school position and still recruiting for the Spanish position, unfortunately just not getting. Applicants for these positions, um unfortunately, we're not alone, um other schools in the region are continuing to face the same difficulties. But we will continue to post and and do our best and and hope that we'll have certified candidates applying. And then later on today, we will be approving our board goals. So if you remember, we had talked about what our board goals were gonna be last week or last four, I apologize. And really, we talked about policy oversight, and there will be an update from our policy committee. Really have an ambitious goal of completing and updating our policy manual. We um we think we're making it, we are putting it on a four-year rotation. So we'll always continually be reviewing and updating our policy manual. Once we have the entire manual approved, it will be a much easier task to keep it updated and to review those policies. So you can see that the responsibility would be on the policy committee and myself. And we will report out progress in March and in June, and then develop next steps. We'll then go into action steps for our strategic plan as we implement that. Which brings us to goal two, which is our strategic planning, so working um with myself to really make sure that we get that. Strategic plan approved and in place. Um we have had initial meetings this summer, we are in the process of where we're really looking at identifying four goals. Looking at action steps and then really trying to be very specific with measurable outcomes. So everyone knows that we have accomplished that goal by having true tangible accomplishments as as measurement guys. Then the third goal was board development, and we had talked about completing a self-evaluation. And then again, making that a focus for future professional development for the board. Things and uh any areas that in need of improvement identified in that self-evaluation. And then last but not least, of course, we want to make sure that we are um continuing to fiscally sound. And supporting our goals with our with our budget development, so we will follow our budget calendar. We'll have our budget approved, and then the finance committee will make sure that they are reviewing those pieces of the budget and. Um presenting those updates at our board meetings, so that will be later on that we will be approving our board goals. Community leadership, the board also talked about having um some sort of efficacy in the community as well as an opportunity to. Meet with um community members or other people to have information about um things that are going on. In this, in the school, in the community, and um meeting with local officials, so we have five ambitious goals for the Board of Education. Any questions about the board goals? And then just upcoming events, this Friday, we do have, or excuse me, this Thursday, we have our early dismissal and relocation drill. So at one o'clock, we will go into a lockdown. And administrators and our SRO will release classrooms, and they will then relocate to the bus garage, they will get on buses. And then we will, once everyone is over there, attendance is taken, the students will then return to their classrooms, and they will be dismissed fifteen minutes earlier than the normal time. Friday, we have no school to recognize Veterans Day. Also on Thursday in the morning, we will have both an elementary and a middle school, high school celebration of our veterans. And then we have our parent teacher contest coming up, um it's the eighteenth and the nineteenth, those are half-days for the elementary. And then as Gianna shared, our drama club production, Little Mermaid, is coming up on the eighteenth through twentieth. And then it's hard to believe, but soon we'll get at our Thanksgiving recess, November twenty-third to the twenty-fifth.
That's November tenth, yeah, October tenth, is that right?
Yes.
For the report. Oh, okay, um. We have um Amy Churchfield, would you like to address the board, welcome?
All right, uh good evening, and Mister Dwyer mentioned, my name is Amy Churchfield. Uh my husband and I live in Brooklyn with our two boys, they are in seventh grade and ninth grade. And I wanted to take a few minutes to speak to you tonight. See, because I was one of the twelve that sent in the run, and did the survey that we have children that are interested in. Adding lacrosse to Geneseo's lineup of sports. Um along with that survey, while we feel Geneseo offers a great variety of sports, um our kids are year-round athletes. Between all the sports seasons here at Geneseo and then club and travel sports. Um they had the opportunity, two years ago, from their hockey friends to say, hey, you should try lacrosse over here at Avon. And so my seventh grader did, and he recruited more Geneseo kids to come over to Avon and play over there. And they have since completed their youth opportunities for lacrosse at Avon. Um and they too are looking for more opportunities to play, they're not baseball players, they're not track students, they're track athletes. They wanna play lacrosse. Uh there are girls that are also involved in the program, so there is an equal opportunity for both boys and girls to play. We're not looking to start up our own lacrosse program at Geneseo, as I mentioned, they played at Avon. Um Livonia's youth program couldn't field enough kids to keep their youth program growing, so they too came over to Avon. So essentially, for the past two years, our Geneseo kids have been playing with an Avon-Livonia-Geneseo merged. Uh lacrosse team, and that is what we would like to continue doing. There are not enough kids to field our own, our own um team, but there is a need out there. The current um Livingston Lakers lacrosse team um could use new players. I spoke to a number of the families throughout the season from both Livonia and from Avon. And not only did they want us to come over and play with them, they need us to come over and play. As um Mister Beely said, there's always things with illnesses, injuries, academic requirements. Movement of kids from team to team, but there is definitely a need, and I think. This is the time to look at different opportunities, I know lacrosse has been brought up over the years to the board. But I think that we are in a different time with a different opportunity for merged sports. Um and because there is the need out there for it, obviously, there's interest, there's a number of families, there's a number of students. Um we would be welcomed by the families and the students if we were able to merge with those programs. Um it's been a wonderful opportunity, and one of the first questions I always get is, what about our Geneseo baseball program? And my ninth grader is a baseball player, so I would never have asked for this opportunity if I thought it would put our baseball program in jeopardy. Uh coming up in the modified level, Geneseo this year had two youth travel baseball programs. So we have a large number of baseball players that are coming up. I know there have been travel softball programs, so we have softball players coming up. So I feel that we are in a great up, a great position right now to be able to offer a merged. Sport for lacrosse. Kids today, so kids today have been playing merged sports from the very beginning, as I mentioned, my kids play hockey, and that, the Livingston Blues have been merged. With the entire county, um the baseball programs are merged, and so they now look at. And so they now look at these merged opportunities, giving them more teammates, giving them a competitive edge and giving them more opportunities. And so I would like to see us um explore those opportunities and I would just ask for your support and um keeping an open mind when it comes to looking at what we offer now and keeping those sports, but as well as adding new opportunities for our students, for our athletes and to help out our fellow Livingston County schools and their programs as well. So, thank you.
Great, thanks. Thanks very much for coming in.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. And I, I know Craig and others will do their due diligence.
They have been absolutely wonderful. So yes, thank you both very much for, I know a number of parents have sent requests and so we appreciate all you've done up to this point to um to look into the program and see what direction we could possibly go now. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, committee reports. Craig's going to uh fill in for Mike for the uh finance committee report.
Mm-hmm. We met last Thursday, I think. And um you know, the the main event was that we had our representative from Mcleod Metzger, Barr and Co. Tom Zuberth um come in and go over the audit, which I think everybody has, nobody has in the home. And so Tom, Tom went through, you know, not really under the depths of it, but the executive summary. Yeah, I think the takeaway was that it was a, it's good, clean audit. And uh no real concerns. No concerns, period. We talked a little about, which we've talked about in the past. They do since maybe five, six years now, they're required to look at our long-term liabilities, where our liabilities are for healthcare, retirement, so on going forward and you know, be stated, we're in a good position there compared to in the base of the service. That was pretty great in the same thing. Yep, that was really the most of our meeting. We, you know, we touched on the capital project and we get a good update on it. And um talked a little about shared services and what opportunities might be out there with that, something more specific.
Yeah, just in regards to um the audit, that really speaks to the work in the business office. And Mr. Porter and Mrs. Hope make sure that that audit is, is nice and clean. So really commend the business office for all their hard work there.
With all respect, it really. She's tough, you know, and very good. Make sure we're all invited.
Thank you. Kudos to you and your staff. I mean, after all, we're running a, what a twenty-one million dollar business here. You get a good audit, it's a, it's a really good thing. So thank you for that. Thanks, Stephanie.
Appreciate it.
You know, I think one of the, the one point, I think really, the main point was we had too much money in our, our school lunch fund.
Oh.
That's, if that's as bad as it gets.
That's as bad. That, that may be a good problem to have.
Yeah.
All right, any questions? Thank you. Um, Policy Committee, we met tonight. Um Cindy had talked to our attorney, who's a, a policy guru. And um kind of the long and short of this uh thinking in terms of less is more, um sticking with policies that are required. Um and then do more of administrative uh procedures, administrative functions. Um when you approve a policy, it's, it's like the gospel. And it takes uh some uh, some work to undo it. So uh, you know, with that in mind, we looked at several policies. Uh three that we will present uh for first read next time. Uh visitors to school is one, and that includes the procedures. Uh people coming in and presenting their ID and all, all that works. Uh we really need to have that policy. The school safety plan, of course, we need that. And uh another required policy in reference to weapons in school, gun-free zones, that sort of thing. So we need to have those. So we'll present those uh the next time for first read. Um there's some policies that that we pulled out in the, in view of less is more, uh and and we really don't need needs in policy. Um thirty-four eleven is the prohibition of weapons on school grounds that's covered under the required uh policy. Um thirty-four twelve, threats of violence in school, equipment, that's covered elsewhere. Uh fifty-six eighty-three is fire and emergency drills, bomb threats, uh bus drills, uh bus emergencies that uh we can do that through administrative procedures.
And they're, they're also required by regulations. So, you know, we certainly don't need a work policy that just repeats what um the regulations require.
And uh the fourth one was uh for use of surveillance cameras in the district. And on school buses, that's covered elsewhere, right?
Correct.
Other commissioners, right? Okay. So it's uh pretty dry stuff, but we're making some pretty good headways. We're making some good headway. Uh thank you. This is Cleveland, this is Claude, for leading the students. So uh I'll try to answer any questions for you then. But we'll keep plugging along. Good. So with that, we'll move to personnel. Right, no, no.
GCF.
Oh, oops, GCF, sorry.
Yes, we have had, GCF's recently had, I think, three proposals um presented to them for different grants. Um we heard earlier that they provided the pumpkin patch on, on our site. And just, you know, again, you can't say it enough, their support and wanting to do wonderful things for both our staff and our students, that's, that's their goal and they do a great job. We have a meeting coming up, November nineteenth, I think it's called. So we, we do have a meeting coming up, so we'll be able to report on um whatever we discuss at that meeting.
Great, thank you. Now we're ready for a very, all right, I would move that we, the consent agenda for items eight point zero two through eight point one seven. Sorry. Questions on any of those?
Question on eight oh eight, eight oh nine, um reservations. Um just a real. I'm sorry. Uh the custodial reservation, you know, to the bigger building.
Fortunately, they started and resigned on the same day. It's, it's difficult where, when we are hiring for some of our positions. It's, it's, it's not like the typical where we are knowing people from our community and and have that connection. Maybe they're um people from other communities and I don't know what the, the buy-in is. So when we, unfortunately, when they start to go through the expectations of what the checklist would require and and our expectations of the home room, they said, they didn't know things.
Two different ones? Are we still okay with staffing?
Yes, we have, I believe we are. Not under storm, but we do have, we're interviewing and trying to fill those positions on a regular basis.
Any other uh questions on any of those? If not, uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? unanimous, thank you. Your new business?
I would move we adopt the consent agenda for items nine point zero two through nine point zero seven.
Uh questions on any of those?
You're on the board, Paul, but I'm not also. Cindy. Even online and stuff. Or goal or anything like that, um what's our approval? You know, I think it's uh, my opinion is to handle when both shared and how the staff can understand. You know, the, the, the teachers, all these students, high school, stuff like that. And understand what we stand. What we're working for. That was, and so they could clearly see that. Words engaged.
Absolutely. Yes, they will be on the website. Um as well as when we move through the updates, that information will be provided on the website. And yes, we will print the goals and have them available. We have, like, if you go by our district office, we have the old goals up there and then in the, in the main offices.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Them, thank you.
Since I, we did the motion for a consent agenda for items ten point zero two through ten point zero six.
Any questions on any of those? Everybody good on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye, anyone opposed? Yes, unanimous, thank you. Um okay, let the, entertain the motions and go into the session.
I will involve the executive session to discuss two personnel, personnel items and leaderships.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.